I said, okay, I'll do it if you play my favorite.
Good evening. The time is 6:30, and I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council Order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Chuha?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Lauko?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Moving on to approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from our January 11, 2024 meeting? Dave? Nope. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Moved in second and further discussion. Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lauko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Moving on to manager's report. Good evening, Randy.
Good evening, Mayor. President's Day is coming up on the 19th. Regular city operation will be closed, but the 24/7 operations will continue as usual. We received notice from the Ohio EPA Division of Drinking and Ground Waters that the application for the Public Water System Distribution Equipment Grant has been funded. This was put in for over a year ago, and we did not get funded in the first round, so this is a subsequent round that they're funding us. The Ohio EPA will be sending us the award letter and grant agreement sometime in mid-March. It's a reimbursement grant in the amount of $8,929 for some pieces of equipment, an Aquaphon A150, which is an acoustic water leak detector, a Sean Stett instrument Rex buried pipe and cable locator, and a Sean Stett instrument Maggi magnetic locator. So all equipment for the Water and Sewer Department to use. We have submitted a Go Green community grant request to the Jogga Trumbull Solid Waste Management District to fund an exposition 70-gallon custom trash receptacle recycler, and that's the recycling part is the grant, for the Heritage House in the amount of $3,500. Not on your manager's report, but just a reminder that the 2024 budget meeting is scheduled for March 7, here in council chambers at 6:30. And an update on the Veterans Banner Program, the Hometown Heroes Program. There was a flyer that was included in all the water bills, water sewer bills. Everyone should have received one of these, and that did generate additional interest. So the 30, which was the limit for this first round, we're at that 30. So we're ready to go for this year, and we're taking lists of people who might be interested in possibly doing another round next year. So we'd have 30 for these two years, and then another two-year program possibly next year. So we'll see.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so happy to find out that we could get the 30. Christmas tree drop-off update Paul gave me today. There were 63 trees dropped off, 36 by residents, 27 of them from the trees that were on the square. And there is a gentleman who comes and takes them and uses them for fish habitat and some other purposes. So he came and he took 51 of the 63. There were 12 that were remaining, which were too big for him, which were chipped and then composted. So that was that pickup for the Christmas trees. And Heather wanted to give us an update on the eclipse, the solar eclipse that's coming in April, and what's going to happen here in town.
So on the 8th beginning, which is a Monday, beginning at 12:30, we're going to start having our eclipse celebration on the square. We, the city has, with partnership with Rotary, Rotary purchased 1,000 glasses, pairs of solar glasses for us to have on hand. We're going to start handing those out. We have two featured speaker who's going to do two presentations at the theater, and I want to thank the folks for going over there, Mike and Becky, and was it Colton who came over and helped us out? Colton yesterday? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, to make sure that we could use that space. Sorry, you didn't know I was talking. Sorry. So we're going to do these presentations in the theater. We're going to have family activities at Park Elementary in the auditorium. We're going to do puzzles, sun catchers, things for younger kids to come in and do. We're also going to be having an art show for students, and all the art will be displayed at the Heritage House. We're contemplating a moonwalk competition, but we haven't quite worked out the details of that. So anyway, so it's going to be, if you're going to be around, it's going to be really like fun afternoon on the square. The actual eclipse here is 3:13. We have T-shirts for sale, and we have pictures of those online. I forgot, I should have brought one down there in Steve's office, but I can grab one and show it to you all later. So, and we'll just, as we keep kind of focusing, getting all the details worked out, we'll just, next month, we'll have an update on that as well. It's Monday, April 8, and officially, like on the square, we'll start about 12:30, and we'll have a really clean schedule of events. We're working on parking right now, how to figure out how to manage our parking. We have been told to expect that we could have upwards of 2,000 people on the square, depending. So because you think about, even in Ohio, not everybody's in the path of the eclipse, so some folks who are in Ohio, even, you know, folks are going to be driving in. So it should be a fun afternoon. And the weather is going to be just like it was today, so it's going to be like a perfect day for it.
I have anticipation, a high school buddy and his wife coming all the way from Florida.
Right.
Here to see it.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Projects, Center Street Sidewalk Infill Project, ODOT, the walk-through with ODOT was scheduled for the 31st, and I understand it went well. That project. The Head and Glen Water Main Loop, materials are stockpiled, and actually, they're out there working on getting that project going. 2024 Asphalt Resurfacing of Chardon Windsor Road from Grant Street to 608. You've never heard of this project because it just came up the other day. Staff's working with County Engineers Office on a new and unexpected project that will mill and fill, mill and resurface Chardon Windsor Road, which a portion is in the city limits. The engineer's estimate for that portion, which is right near Melharter Parks, around $25,000. Work is planned for this summer. Speaking with our city engineer, we decided it is a prudent thing and a smart thing to go ahead and partner with them to get that section done and not just leave a one section between. We did South Hampden, and then there'd be this section, and then there would be the new. So it just doesn't make sense to not participate with them, even though we didn't know about it. Maple Highlands Trail Stream and Wetland Restoration Project, right by the new trailhead. No update now. If you've been by, it's ready to go. We just need the spring to come and for things to take root there. State Root Resurfacing 2024 is now going to be state root resurfacing 2025 due to longer than anticipated plan review period for the project. It's moved to ODOT fiscal year 2025. We're expecting the bid to be awarded in March of next year at the council meeting, so a year from next meeting that we have here in council chamber. The Center Street Sanitary Improvement, the bid opening took place on the 30th. The city engineer's estimate was $559,175. We received eight bids, which is good, ranging from $541,577 to $793,880.91. The apparent low bidder is De Joya Suburban Excavating, and there is a recommendation in your packet tonight, the engineer to award that. Any questions for me or any staff members?
Thank you, Randy.
Welcome.
Moving on to Planning Commission Reports. Good evening, Andy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. So Planning Commission met in regular session on January 23rd. We had a number of items on the agenda. The first thing we did, we had an organization sort of meeting ahead of time where yours truly was elected the chairman once more of the Planning Commission, and Mary Jo Stark was reelected as vice chairperson. Then we moved on to our regular business. We had three items of new business. The Planning Commission Case 24-006, Frontier Land Group LLC is requesting record document approval for major development. That is on the agenda this evening as well for the improvement of their plant, and that was approved by Planning Commission, recommended for approval by Planning Commission. Planning Commission Case 24-007, Willa Tree Development Company requesting preliminary plan approval. This was, in fact, also approved by Planning Commission that evening, although there was some discussion. And I just wanted to mention a few things related to that, that one of the discussions we had had to do with the fact that this particular development is going to require the use, this phase will require the use of a pump station. Now, that's not particularly unusual, but what is unusual is that the pump station is not going to be run or maintained by the city, as all the other pump stations in the city are, but instead will be the responsibility of the homeowners association. This is somewhat unusual, and I, we sort of had some doubts about the long-term viability of that. This particular phase is located on the, near the crest of the hill on Water Street. In theory, the, as you know, things like sewage likes to roll downhill. There is, in fact, a sanitary sewer located in the front of the old Rite Aid drugstore. So in theory, I knew this, there's an existing line there. We had this discussion previously, that that line is too small to handle this subdivision. It would have to be replaced and resized. So I would like this to be brought to the Water and Sewer Committee for some additional discussion about potentially working with the developer to finance a line, a replacement line on this section of Water Street, so that we have a gravity sewer instead of a pump station that's going to be owned by the private citizens of the city. So that's just my opinion, and we can discuss that later. Nonetheless, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of this preliminary plan. And then finally, Planning Commission Case 24-008.
Andy, can I interrupt just a little?
Sure.
Topic you were just talking about, did that come up at planning, or was that post your meeting?
No, that was, we discussed that quite a bit in the meeting.
Okay.
We didn't make, we didn't make it a condition of approval, but it's something that, but we'd like to see some further discussion on.
We discussed that at a prior meeting as well, if I recall.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that lift station going to be permanent?
Well, in theory, yes.
No, that's not the intention.
Oh, okay, that's new to me.
I thought I mentioned it in the Planning Commission.
I don't believe you did.
That the sanitary sewer extension is currently on the unfunded list, but it's a higher priority on the unfunded list. And over the next five years, we have some pretty significant expenses. So the intention for this lift station has always been that it be temporary until the city can get that project completed and allow them to tie into it.
Right. So Doug did, in fact, bring that up, this funding conundrum at the Planning Commission meeting. So, but there are other mechanisms for funding that we've done in the past, creating a separate sewer district, things of that nature, where the project could be funded differently than out of the capital budget. So those are just something I'd like to discuss.
Doug, or somebody does, do you guys remember what the estimate is on that project?
Off the top of my head, no. It was, it was close to $1 million. I don't want to say it hit a million, but it was up there.
So just something for further discussion.
And Andy, that lift station is just going to serve?
Just one, the first phase of the subdivision.
It's this phase, yeah.
What goes, the second, the next phases, where does the sewage?
They'll tie into the trunk line.
Yes.
Put in many years ago.
So that's set. It's just phase one. That's the issue.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Planning Commission Case 24-008, the long-awaited text amendment to the, which is really a complete overhaul of Planning and Zoning Code, Part 11 of Planning and Zoning Code of the Catified Ordinances. This was reviewed, it hadn't been reviewed extensively in the last several years, and as you recall, we've had, we had a number of joint meetings to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. So we approved that, and just to give you a heads up, the approval, our recommendation of approval and your approval of that text amendment will trigger the need to revise our zoning maps for the city due to the elimination of the Rural Conservation District and the C1 Commercial Districts. So they'll have to have public hearings and so on. Don't know if the law director, would you like to comment on that?
We will follow the process, step forth in our existing code for zoning map amendments, and then when this body votes to approve the text amendments, there'll be a subsequent piece of legislation amending the zoning map as well.
But we would need to have public hearings, though.
Correct, and those are in the process.
Correct. So Planning Commission will see the zoning map amendment at their, at this month's meeting, and then the public hearing that is set for March for council will be for the text amendment and the zoning map amendment. So the text amendment will happen first to create the districts, and then the zoning map amendment will follow, back to back, same night.
Right. That concludes my report. Andy, do you have anything you want to end?
No, you covered it very well.
Are there any further questions for Andy? Thank you, Andy. Moving on to council committee reports, Finance Committee. Debbie?
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee met on Monday, February 5, and Mark highlighted some of the budget items, and we spent time going over the, or an explanation of the software that he's now implemented of an, what's it called? OpenGov? Okay. And if you'd like to go into any more explanation on that?
You know, this will be the first time that we see it, our council sees the PDF version of the OpenGov software, so we kind of just, we've been implementing. It was kind of a last-minute call that, hey, we have everything in the system. Let's utilize the reporting and put it into the PDF that council sees. So this will be the, you know, first run-through with the new budget book. And we're trying to get a couple of the fonts bigger. Some of the charts and graphs are a little bit small, so we're working on that.
I have used a magnifying glass, put it that way. But it seems very thorough, and we'll see a final product before our budget meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
About a week.
It was, it was nice to see the progress being made on the implementation. I know these things don't happen overnight, so a lot of hard work went into the budget book for this year, so I like the direction it's heading, and I hope everyone else will too. So, yeah, nice work on that. I appreciate that, the efforts.
Thank you. Nothing more, Mayor.
Thank you for that update. Moving on to hearing of persons before council. We have no one scheduled, but we will move on to general public. If anybody would like to address council, this is the time. Please come up and state your full name, where you're from, and ask any questions or make any comments.
Let me take these off. These are only for driving. Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and promise not to take up too much of your time. I thank you for all the good work you do and the hard decisions you make for our community. My name is Haley Carbon. I'm a senior at Notre Dame Cathedral Latin, and I was born and raised in Chardon. I work at Noche Pizza across the street. I played Chardon Rack softball. I've spent thousands of dollars at King Cone, most likely, and I grew up at the Joga Theater. Loud and outgoing, my mom enrolled me in my first musical workshop at age four, where I met Angela Hansen. So I have about 14 years of experience to support the points I make tonight. Throughout the years, I think I spent more time at the Joga Theater than I did at home or school, performing year-round, sometimes in three or four shows at once. During Angela's last year with the Guild, I was in many, I was in many of her productions, which alone made about $80,000 of revenue, including but not limited to her sold-out box office breaking run of Beauty and the Beast. When I got the news that the Guild dissolved, I broke down in tears. I was additionally in the first Curtain 440 production and probably about 40 more since then. Mandy Machina spoke to you last month about the plentiful base of students that Angela has educated and helped to raise. I am that student. I found a sense of belonging, love, and theater education that has yet to be matched anywhere else at Curtain 440. I've gained the skill of building, performing on and tearing down a stage in 36 hours. Angela and her team have profound levels of business expertise and ingenuity, proven by their ability to juggle agreements with sometimes a dozen rehearsal and performance spaces at once. Her technical skill and adaptability are proven by her ability to set up, learn, and control new light and sound systems perfectly, wherever she may be located, whether it be a church, high school, or multi-purpose, multi-purpose room. Curtain 440 has a strong fan base, shown by the packed house at the Heritage House this last Sunday for its five-year anniversary. Overall, my experiences with Curtain 440, and Angela Hansen specifically, have made me the person that I am today, with the skills that I have, the confidence, self-esteem, and maturity that I have gained, and I would love nothing more than to see her dream and our dreams come true by occupying the Joga Theater and going back home. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to address council. Phil? Always got to ask. All right, moving on to old business. We have no old business. Moving on to new business. New business A, discuss requirements and expectations for persons to be listed on council meeting agenda. This is on here due to creating better communication with the public. If someone does want to appear on our, on our agenda, and if they want to address council with the addition of printed literature, then we're going to go through some guidelines for that in a second. But what we're just trying to avoid is, in the last few years, people have indicated that they want to be on our agenda. The deadlines for submittal of materials have been communicated to them, but then they, at times, fail to meet those requirements. What that puts us in a position, especially Amy, is deciding what to do with agenda the day, or printed materials the day of. It doesn't necessarily give council a time to digest the information prior to our meeting. So we just want to encourage folks to pay attention to the deadlines as best you can, and I'll let Amy go through some of the guidelines on submittal.
Thank you. As the mayor said, there's, we have, we have just a few guidelines to be added to the agenda. So if someone wishes to be added, they should either email me, or they can call me by the Wednesday prior to the council meeting, which is really essentially eight days before our meeting date. So that is a Wednesday. Any documents that they plan to discuss with council should also be to me by that date, so that I can include it in our packets to go out to council. That way, they have time to digest that information. And then any audio or visual presentations that we can display on our TVs here, they can work with me on how to use our system, and that takes, you know, it takes probably 30 minutes to run through. So either that night or a couple days prior, come over to our office, and we can do just a practice run-through to make sure everything's working, so that we're not spending a lot of time trying to work out any kinks the night of our council meeting. I think that covers it.
Good. Any questions? All right, thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item, new business B, consider job description for a full-time lands building maintenance worker. Randy?
Yes, sir. In the packet, we have a job description proposed for the full-time position of lands and buildings maintenance worker. This is necessary because we haven't had this position before. It's being created. It is in the temporary budget, and we did discuss it quite a bit at the November pre-budget meeting. So basically, it's very similar to the maintenance worker positions in streets, cemeteries, and parks, and water and sewer maintenance worker as well. So we made it the same, ask-me bargaining unit, pay grade one position, so it'll mirror those as well. And I can answer any questions. We're ready to advertise as soon as we have a job description.
Are there any questions for Randy? Is there a motion to accept the job description for the full-time position of lands and building maintenance worker as presented? Second and further discussion. Call the question, please.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lauko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business C, discussion of GTV contract. Heather will discuss that.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's contract with GTV will expire at the end of April. Council received a copy of an email from Mr. Jevnikar that was dated January 17th to the city that detailed his income and expenses for 2023. I'm going to let Ben start by reviewing the current contract that we have with GTV.
Thank you very much. City currently has an agreement with GTV. You'll recall that in 2022, we met in public sessions and discussed and negotiated the terms of an agreement between the parties for the continued operations of GTV. You authorized the city to go into a one-year term agreement, which contemplated that the video service provider fee that city residents pay for their cable telecommunications services, which generally then flows back to GTV for its operations, continued to be paid to GTV, subject to a $16,000 holdback. That's the current compensation structure, the way city, the city provides for payment for GTV to operate. That's the structure we have currently. On May 1 of this year, the agreement will lapse, and at which point, the city will have to make a decision as to whether they want to negotiate a new agreement or not negotiate a new agreement. If you choose not to negotiate a new agreement, there will be no contract with GTV, and there would be no right for the video service provider fee that the city currently distributes to GTV less the holdback to continue to take place going forward.
Ben, you, when you said continue to, but you meant to GTV?
Correct.
You're not saying we don't have the right to collect the fee?
Correct.
Just not?
So we, we received the fee, and through our discretion, we have generally deposited those funds into the general fund and then provided them to GTV for its operations. In the past few years, we provided that less than holdbacks for improvements to this lovely room we're in now.
And Randy, if I remember right, from our pre-budget meetings or correspondence, what have you, we budgeted that revenue in for 2024?
Budgeted the same way as the contractors.
All right, I'm going to share a few more points of information, and then we can open it up for discussion. I did speak with Dr. Hanlon several months ago about GTV, like I did the year before. I asked him directly about the impact on the school, should council decide not to renew the contract, or if we should decide to continue with reduced funding. He stated that the school would adapt and problem-solve to fill that need should we decide not to renew. He said it would not be a problem if school board meetings were recorded and posted online versus being broadcast live. The school continues to use their own box cast system to live broadcast from the football field and the gym. If you recall, those are the cameras that they have that are mounted, and they're always present, and they can, and do live broadcasts right now, some events. Social media is also utilized to post videos, and of course, staff, coaches, and family members often record on their own. The Chardon football production costs continue to be covered by the Gridiron Club, so none of the money that we provided in the last two years has gone to covering the football. That's, has another source. The $16,000 from 2023 was used by the city to purchase cameras and accessory equipment for the square. Where we decide to not renew the GTV contract or continue with reduced funding, the franchise cable fees could be used for other projects. Randy has identified some projects that could be funded by these fees. We've talked about some of these before. They include the emergency notifications, notification systems, this is the, including the reverse 911, citizen request management and notification systems, and that's something similar to like our Update Me that we have, improvement and expansion of security camera systems throughout the city. systems throughout the city, audio and visual, I'm sorry, audio and video recording improvements, including here still in council chambers and in the large conference room. The city currently has the ability to record and post council meetings, and Amy has been working on putting, something I didn't know, we have a YouTube channel for the city. How many people subscribe to that right now?
It's like eight or 13.
Right. But, for example, in, so there's four council meetings that are on the city's YouTube channel right now, including the December meeting when GTV did not come and record our council meeting. City has not had any complaints from citizens, not to the city, about the reduction of programming over the last year, the need for increased programming, and we heard nothing from the community when the service was off the air in November for a few days. So with that, I open it up to any thoughts or points that people want to make about GTV.
So I just, I'll start. So Mr. Jevnikar sent us his quarterly report for the last quarter in 2023, and he was in the red.
He is in the red.
And he was saying this can't continue. So either, he's going to be looking for additional revenue, apparently, I would, I would imagine, or else he said the alternative would be to reduce services even more, which is, from what you're saying, it sounds like they'd be, be hitting absolute rock bottom then.
No, what I'm saying is that we haven't had any, because there's no way to measure who utilizes GTV, there's no way to measure how many people actually watch GTV. All we can go by is what we ever, we hear from the public, which we don't ever hear anything. We did invite Mr. Jevnikar to come tonight, and he had another engagement.
Right, I get my point. Was, he would be covering fewer events, and frankly, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if anyone knows. Do we know how many events he actually covers that are germane to the city of Sharden?
It's completely up to his, it's completely up to his discretion, and you would have to go online and look and see what he's done to be able to, to judge that.
Heather, can you explain again, how our meetings are already out there? How does that work?
You mean how Amy has done?
Yeah, how does that?
Amy, can you explain how you've done that?
Sure. So it's recording right now through these cameras, and we have a YouTube channel, but we've been trying to perfect the, all the recordings, so we haven't promoted it yet. But we have the ability to.
So you can go online and, on YouTube, and there's City of Sharden, Shalen, you can watch the December meeting, and it doesn't have anything to do with GTV.
So you can watch, you can see the, you can hear the video and, and watch?
Yes.
But it's, it's not live.
It's not live. It, we have the ability to do live if we choose to, but it is not.
Right.
Could be though.
We're only laughing because we know that only
Few people.
Eight people watch these live.
There have been, and
And when we go back and look, and we can see how many people went and looked at the videos, it's not very many. But yes, it's not live. It would be, it would, that would be the difference for that. For me, this comes down to how this money is utilized, how many people use the service. I personally feel, as you all know, that very few people watch and use GTV. I think that technology has changed, people's viewing habits have changed. You know, when Dave and I talked about this last year, he, you know, we went through how 140-minute video of school graduation, the average view time was three and a half minutes when people would go and look. They would just go and look at like small snippets. And so to me, this is just about how technology has changed people's lives and people's viewing habits, and is this the best way to spend this money? So for me, I am not in favor of, you know, fully funding GTV. I'm not in favor of increasing funding. I would be in favor of not renewing the contract. But I know other folks have different feelings, so you should speak up.
So the city pays the franchise fees that we collect to GTV?
Yes.
So the city is not out anything? It doesn't, it, there's no other expense to the city?
The city, right, right.
Okay. The only thing I looked up was on the Spectrum website about the franchise fees. It states that Section 622 of the Cable Communications Act of 1880, 1984, states that municipalities are entitled to a maximum of 5% of gross revenues derived from cable system operations, including services like public educational and government access channels. I just want to point that out.
Now, Ben?
That's what our, the Spectrum customers
But we can't, we can't get account, we can't get any information from Spectrum either, right? We've never been able to get any information.
David said that he has not been able to.
Right.
Now, Ben, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but legally, the city is able to use that franchise fee money. Are there any restrictions on how it will be?
How it can be used and spent? So there's nothing in the statute, so there's a, there's a chapter of revised code that articulates precisely how the funds received from the video service provider fee come into the city. There is nothing in that statute that states precisely whether there are any restrictions. In the absence of any restrictions, and as it's a term in our agreement as well, it goes in the general fund for the city's discretion as to the best use for the citizens of the city.
I think, Heather, another discussion needs to be had at some point, on if we were to no longer continue with GTV or any other provider, because there could be other options, I don't know. I'm just, I was not aware of what we already do, whether we want to continue to have that fee charged to the residents or not. That's a second, that's a separate question.
Right, I agree. That's a secondary question. So one is, do we renew the contract? Do we renew the contract at the same where we're at now, or do we make another change? That's the first part of it. And the second part of it is, you know, what, do we continue collecting the fees? And then if we do, what, you know? I mean, we, when we talked about this last year, we talked specifically, I mean, the money went to the camera, like camera, cameras on the square and the accessory antennas, and that's what that money was used for last year. You know, I see that as something that benefits the community, it helps the police department, that kind of thing. But again, you know, that's my opinion, so. Dan, you have any, I'm not trying to call you out.
You just did.
I did, though.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that's difficult, right, is I know some people do watch it, I watch it, I utilize specifically the cameras on the, the camera on the square that is on the theater. I know that there's a lot of folks that they're, and their grandparents watch programming of their grandchildren, specifically music programs, things like that. So I do, do see some value that GTV does. It is difficult, though, to your point, to get metrics as far as who's watching it, where they're from, and, you know, the value that's derived from it. So, I mean, it's, I don't know how much we've, it's kind of difficult, right? Because to get the feedback, we'd almost have to solicit feedback, but without having a mechanism to get it, it's hard to get objective feedback.
Right, that's right. Because some people might get feedback, but they don't actually have cable, which we do know that has actually happened. They're not watching it, but they think we should have it, but they don't use it. You know, that, I, I will say this, you know, it's, it is a subjective, it is subjective.
Very subjective.
We, you know, some things we know for sure. I mean, we've had a contract with them for a long time. We know, you know, how much money, you know, in different times when people, more people had cable, maybe it was different then, but we're at a different place now, so.
I don't think the Gridiron Club will be able to have broadcast if GTV doesn't exist.
Well
And I know that the product that's done based on the camera you're talking about is not nearly the quality based on some of the views and whatnot that GTV is providing.
I don't know how to answer that, because I don't know how he does all that with the, with the Gridiron Club. I don't know how that all works. I just know that, you know, when we're talking about like the numbers he presented, it's, that doesn't include football at all.
No, I, I get that, but I'm just saying that there wouldn't be the mechanism there. If they, if Dave and crew doesn't exist, I don't know that they're going to have the ability to broadcast, to hire them.
Right. But we don't know what is going to be, right? Yeah.
Looking at it as a municipal function, I think the, to me, the primary importance of GTV in the past has been that it was showing our council meetings, and I think that even though we say few people watch them, nonetheless, it's there, that there's, we're there to be seen by the public, right? So, you know, we, we're not, unlike some other bodies that we can name, that we don't, we don't operate without, without any cameras in the room.
Right.
And some people, some communities have dropped GTV, at least their rationale was that they would be saving their residents' money by eliminating the, the franchise fee from people's Spectrum bills. But I don't know that any of them have ever replaced GTV with the system that we have.
I don't know that. I don't know.
I don't know that either. I'm going to say probably not, because it's, it's not cheap. But we've made that investment, and we have the ability now to, you know, and live broadcast apparently as well, we can in fact show, for transparency's sake, show these proceedings live and in their full, full context as, as video viewable on YouTube, which costs nothing. So things like football games, that's entertainment. I'm not sure that that is strictly speaking a city function, a municipal function, per se. People can, people do in fact make videos on their camera, on their phone cameras and send them to people in lieu of, you know, as, as you say, because of technology changes, it's much easier to make a, a video yourself, of your children, or whoever, and send it to all your friends and relatives, if you, if that's what you desire to do. I'm kind of coming around to your point of view, that I think that, that the time has come to, to consider cutting the cord.
Okay. Anyone else, Kyle?
Speaking of cutting the cord, I'm just curious, the franchise fees only come from TV? Is it TV subscribers?
Yes.
Right? Cable.
Cable. So you subscribe to the TV package, that would be where the franchise, okay. Because, you know, I only have internet, I dropped the, the cable a long time, I do have Spectrum, I dropped it a long time ago. So I just was curious how that franchise fee was, where that money was coming from, from the, for the franchise fee, so.
I also dropped Spectrum, so it makes no difference to me whether this is collected or not, but I'm just, on behalf of the residents who are paying for it and never using it, I think it's, it's fair to say that it should be returned.
Okay. So, yes?
I am a Spectrum customer, and the franchise fee on my bill is $6.27.
Anyone else?
I guess that's a question I have at this point is, at what point do we need to make a decision on what we're doing?
Well, one is giving notice, right? You know, we're, we're not just ending the, you know, one would be to give GTV notice, but my, my question would be, why do we have to, what, what would be the delay in not, in not making a decision?
So you're, you're looking for a decision tonight?
Why wouldn't we, I, why wouldn't we make a decision tonight?
Well, I think, based on the agenda that said discuss GTV contract, I'm learning stuff tonight that I had no idea about. I'm personally not prepared to make a decision tonight. If you pave it to a vote, I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I can tell you that. My other concern is, if we continue to collect that fee, I have a concern about where it's going and how it's being used. Because the fee was intended way back for, not GTV, but for cable television, the original intent, and I have some concerns about straying from that original intent. And if that's not how it's being used, my gut feeling right now would be to eliminate the fee entirely.
So would your, okay, so you don't want, you're not going to vote no matter what tonight, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So if I, I don't see the point, I don't know why we have, I mean, we've had the same conversation last year, we had some version of it. So I don't see why we need to wait. We don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight on the fees, or the motion could be that we decide not to renew the contract and return the fees to consumers, to the citizens.
I think if we're going to, if we're going to take this thing to a vote tonight, I would have liked to have seen the agenda say, consider termination of GTV contract, not just discuss GTV contract, because this heading on this agenda gives the public no indication, in my opinion, that, that drastic of a move could be under consideration. So if we're going to take this to a vote, I would prefer to see it done in, we can do it at the budget meeting, in three, two weeks, three weeks, whatever that is. Personal opinion.
If you want to amend the meeting, the agenda for the budget meeting, you could do that to address the concern that council members make.
Okay.
Entirely, this party, how do you guys want to know it?
Anyone else?
I agree with Dave. I think it would, the budget meeting would be a good time to
And the purpose of that is to allow
Allow the public to come in.
Come in or to comment.
Correct.
Okay.
So how do we get it out to the public? I know we have reporters here, but really, could we put anything on social media or?
GTV always has it out on there, right? They're always, I mean
The, the, the city is considering this.
Well, our agendas go out. I mean, that's how we notify the public on what we do.
Right. All right. So do we need to take any action other than to just get it added to the agenda for the budget meeting? Yes? Is that enough? Ben?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Are we going to discuss at that same meeting uses? Are we going to get into the, whether we're going to continue the fee or not, or are we just going to talk GTV?
I think that it would be appropriate for us to make a decision. There are, you know, as far as make the decision about GTV and renewing the contract, and then if you have, I guess if you have thoughts or ideas about how to, you know, you've already said how you want us, you know, to return the fee.
Well, I'm, I'm questioning the use, if there is possibility, there could be items that would be proposed that we use that fee for, that I could agree to. I don't know what they would be, but I'm, it's possible, I just don't, I don't know. So I would like to see, if there's a recommendation from staff on how to use this funding
Okay.
I'd like to see that put together in a memo and distributed prior to that meeting, so we have an idea.
Would that be for all the funding, or for $16,000, or for $20,000? It's kind of hard to say.
I would say for all of it. We're talking about eliminating the franchise fee entirely, so it should be for that entire, the entire amount that we collect.
So maybe it could be both options, right?
It's going to be the list that she, she talked about. We don't have dollars to go with all of those as now, because we didn't do all that research. We did apply for a grant for getting a CRM, that communication network, and it was like $25,000 to get that upfront. So we haven't, we haven't done all that homework, because we don't know if we're going to have the money. So I can give some generalities, but there's not going to be specifics.
And that's, and that's adequate.
Is that enough? Okay. So we'll have that prepared to go out with a budget packet.
I guess I would have another suggestion. If we decide to continue the fee, I would recommend that we create a separate fund that that money gets put into, so it's clear what it's being used for, and, because I am not in favor of taking this fee and using it for just anything in the general fund. I will not agree to that.
Now, we've, we've talked about using it in the spirit of what it's supposed to be used for, which is under this, you know, general communications or improving these kind of things. So Amy, you understand what we need, and then Randy, we're going to need you to put something together for us to go out.
And if we decide a separate fund, that can be created later in the year. It's not something that has to be created that night.
Right.
Right? Mark? I know it messes the budget book up a little, but we can live with that.
Yes.
Because we're talking $50,000 that we get?
About 60.
Is the total of the franchise fee? And then, how much was paid to GTV?
Last year?
Yeah.
We kept 16 back.
Okay.
Okay? Are we good? All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Moving on to
Moving on to new business D. Consider any objections to the issuance of D5 liquor permit for PRC management. New business is that piece of Chardon at 110 Cherry Avenue, and Ben's going to review that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will note that the, as Mr. Yehini pointed out to me earlier today, the notice actually indicates that the permit class is a C-class, as opposed to a D5 liquor permit. Notwithstanding, I'm aware of no reason why we would object to the issuance of this permit as...
I read it, I read it as D5.
It says D5.
Where?
The D5 is above the...
Permit class, it's in the box of D5.
Oh, look at that!
The tax district, too.
I retract my previous statement. Good to hear. Still unaware of nothing.
There isn't...
The header on the bottom.
So, now, based on no objections, then you just...
Correct.
All right, thank you, Ben. New business E. Consider announcement of decision for Willow Tree subdivision Phase 1 PRD preliminary plan approved. This is back to Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under our existing PRD regulations, the planning commission considers a preliminary development plan and makes recommendations to this body. Thereafter, this body has to approve an announcement of decision and municipal approval for the same. The announcement of decision and municipal approval that you have in your packet accomplishes the objectives under the zoning code, and if you are inclined to hear more about it, I'm sure Mr. Yehini will tell you the details. Unless you don't want to.
Are you looking for a question, or just, do you have details ready to present?
I can, I can talk for hours. You guys know this. So, it's a matter of how much detail you would like.
Get it down to like three minutes?
Okay. So, what before this evening is the preliminary plan for Phase 1 of Willow Tree. This is the, this project's been going on off and on for probably the past six years or so. Basically, the way the preliminary plan works is, the review process is to make sure that it matches up with the concept plan that was approved several months ago by Planning Commission and Council. This, and basically, the preliminary plan is just a more developed version of the concept plan. If this is approved this evening, you move on then to the full-blown construction documents. Phase 1 sits on about 19.6 acres of the entire, the entire project is about 59 acres, but this is sitting on 19.6 acres of that project. The first phase has 49 units. Planning Commission did review this at their last meeting. They recommended for approval. As Mr. Blackley said, there was a lot of discussion. I'll let him go into how much detail, if he wants to have that discussion about the lift station and details about that. Some of the items that were brought up, the Planning Commission, were the cul-de-sac on Drive A. It's going to be temporary until, until the Meadowlands Drive is extended around, either from the east or the west. At that time, that, there'll be, that connection out to Water Street would be abandoned, and it would just be a cul-de-sac. There is a design for, in this, in these drawings, that show, on top of the cul-de-sac, there would be a straight through to make it, I guess, for lack of a better term, make it flow a little bit better than trying to come in and circumvent a cul-de-sac right away. The other thing in these, the other thing in this plan, the neighbors that are, if you recall, at the concept plan stage, the neighbors to the east of this property had requested as much of that to be protected. There is a 20-foot buffer, minimum 20-foot buffer, that is shown along where their house is and where it backs up to, there's, I think, four lots that back up to their property line. There will be a 50-foot no-build setback in there, so, because of the PRD boundaries. On the landscape plan, I know this has been requested over time, there is street trees shown on this one. In addition, they'll have the site trees for each individual home site will be done by the builder, but as part of the development, there'll be street trees throughout and along the private streets. So, that's, that's the other key point I'd like to make on this evening. The preliminary plan, this, this development, these streets will not be maintained by the city. Obviously, at some point, the intersection with Meadowlands Drive will be part of that roadway that will be a public street, but the call, but the other, the other streets that are in this development will be private streets and will be maintained by a homeowners' association. So, with that, I can answer any questions. Mr. Cook's here this evening, too, if you have any questions.
So, this would start, if everything keeps moving along, approximately when? And how long will it take to, just ballpark?
So, and as part of this, too, they would like to start removing trees in Phase 1 because of the Indiana Bat window that closes, I believe, April 1st. That would allow them to finish up the construction documents, get their permits, and then continue on with construction later this year. Depending on how the construction season goes, potentially, you could see first home sites maybe at the end of this year, or more likely, possibly spring of next year.
Okay. And so, so what would be, what is the projection like? Is this a five-year project or a three-year project? I'm just wondering how long that area is going to be under construction?
It's hard to say, because this is Phase 1, 49 homes. There's an absorption rate. If it's, if it's, it's, the builder is Ryan Holmes, who is also doing Maple Trace. My understanding, they're expecting 25 to 30 homes a year in Maple Trace. So, if you take that number, you'd have a two, two-ish year build-out on Phase 1. To get to 122 homes for the whole development, you're probably talking five to seven years.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the items that we discussed at the commission that I'd like to bring your attention, if you've got the plan, you have a set of plans in front of you, if you look at sheet 7. And this shows the connection of the proposed roadway A to Water Street. And you can see on there, it's an unusual shape. It's a cul-de-sac with a street going through the middle of the cul-de-sac to make the connection. And the rationale, this was something that was discussed in the preliminary plan stage back several months ago, was that expecting somebody to make a double-S turn coming into this or leaving and trying to negotiate the cul-de-sac and enter/exit on Water Street would be, would have been a problem, to say the least. So, they agreed to put a roadway straight through. But for reasons of constructability, and this was discussed extensively at the last Planning Commission meeting, they still want to go ahead and build the whole cul-de-sac. So, we pointed out, though, and the developer agreed, to placing planters or other barriers there at the entrance to, to keep traffic moving straight through and not attempting to make a turn left or right in the initial part of the, in the sub, initial part of the cul-de-sac. So, that was something that was agreed to.
I don't understand where the planters are, Andy, to direct, I understand you want to get traffic flowing straight ahead, but where?
So, they would be really on either side. They'd be here at the, at the top end of the entrance, in the cul-de-sac, so that traffic is directed straight through, instead of trying to negotiate a turn going around that way. The reason, the rationale they wanted to build this now was that they would then, because they're going to have driveways coming off of this, they didn't want to have to build a long driveway out to this, to the center roadway. So, in order to enable them to have driveways going to this pavement on the round part of the cul-de-sac, then we said, well, we don't want, again, the original concern was, we didn't want traffic to be routed, you know, coming in and then making sharp turns going around the cul-de-sac or when it came out, the same thing. So, right here, at the, at the top end of this, there would be planters placed so that, so that you couldn't, to preclude, especially trucks, trying to make that turn.
So, if I'm living in one of the adjacent properties to the cul-de-sac, then I'm going straight ahead and taking a left or a right to get to my driveway?
Well, you could, there may be a gap left in here for a single vehicle.
More cautionary than...
Right.
Andy, would, just thinking about this a little more, would it be, you think it would be more appropriate to put in a solid cul-de-sac, as opposed to having just a strip of pavement through the middle, that once that access to Water Street is removed, they could then take out the center of the cul-de-sac? And you could, you could manage traffic by line striping or something like that?
Yeah, that's, that's not a bad idea. I'll let you work that out in the...
Okay.
So, this is not a final construction set of drawings, okay? So, there's final details that the engineer and the developer will work out, if they want to do that. Let Steve decide whether or not it's something that needs to come back to planning commission for decision. As I said, the other, the other item that was of concern to, to me and several other members of the commission was the idea of spending several hundred thousand dollars to build, the developer's going to spend several hundred thousand dollars potentially to build a pump station on Horse Main to pump the sewer uphill to a sewer, when potentially they could, they could team with the city, and we could use that money and partially fund a new sewer construction for a gravity sewer going from here downhill. My fear is that with a, with any kind of a private, and Paul knows trouble issues we've had with pump stations, they're not something that you want to, to own them long-term and maintain them is an issue. And I can almost guarantee, in 15 to 20 years, we're going to have these people in this subdivision petitioning the city to build a sewer, so they don't have to maintain a pump station anymore. So, we can just kick the issue down the road and let somebody else worry about it in the future? Or I'm just suggesting that Water and Sewer Committee can maybe explore some options before construction starts, and before they build this pump station, and see if we can't come up with another solution.
And when is the, when will the pump station be built?
Before the first house.
Yeah, before the first house.
So, before the end of the year, right?
Yeah.
All right. So, why don't we, why don't we schedule a water sewer meeting, and we'll start that discussion, right?
I think that was the same issue when Walmart came in, where we didn't have capacity. We had sewer, but we didn't have capacity, and they had to pay to run the line down to Bridgewater. And then, years later, when we did have capacity, everything got rerouted. So, the developer had to pay for that, because they wanted to build at that point in time. They didn't want to wait until the city was ready or needed it for themselves. So, we can definitely have that conversation.
If I'm not mistaken, we've had issues in the past with homeowner associations concerned about things being maintained, and I don't think you want to mess around with a pump station.
Right. So, one of the, among the construction details that we're missing in this plan set that we asked the engineer to take a look at were things like standby power generation, access to the pump station, you know, the city, again, has the ability that when power goes out, that, that the pumps can, that there's standby electric power, so the pumps can keep running. Those are all things that need to be added, that are not currently on the drawing, that need to be added. So, at some point, then, I'll ask our engineer and the developer's engineer to come in with their numbers, and then we'll have a discussion. And as far as financing mechanisms, we've done things in the past where we've paid for a sanitary sewer, and then we've gone back and assessed the benefiting properties, so we may know the process.
This lift station topic does not impact our vote tonight on the announcement of decision?
No. No, I would say...
Just for consideration.
Correct. To me, the worst, so what doesn't happen, then they build a pump station, and we have trouble with it down the road. So, that's...
That would be Phase 2. This is Phase 1.
I just, you know, to me, it's...
So, we'll schedule a meeting, and we'll start, we'll talk this out, keep going on this, right?
Right.
Yeah. Because we don't want to have these problems. All right. So, do you need, what do you need from us? Is there any questions for the developer or personal persons with them? So, we need a, are there any other discussion points? If not, then is there a motion to...
I will make that motion.
Accept the announcement of decision for Willow Tree subdivision Phase 1 PRD preliminary plan approval? Who can second it? Further discussion? Please call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Ms. Chuha?
Yes.
I just like to make a statement about Steve Yehini. This guy does a fantastic job. I mean, he takes my phone calls and calls me back and puts up with me, and just does an excellent job. They asked him to be, really is. He needs a raise.
Thanks, Roland.
Thanks, Roland.
Bye, Roland.
Moving on to new business F. Consider announcement of decision for Maple Trace PRD Phase 1 subdivision plot of record and dedication of subdivision improvements. Back to Ben on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll have, you have before you an announcement of decision and municipal approval for certain public improvements in the Maple Trace PRD Phase 1. This is part one of two parts that you're going to be dealing with for Maple Trace this evening. Our code requires the first step to be the municipal approval and announcement of decision of the, out of record, and the acceptance of the public improvements set forth in the plat. You have the plat in front of you in, it's an attachment to the communications from our city engineer. It's generally an acceptance of the public improvements. So, if you want to make these public, if they meet the standards of our code, you've got to take this step of making an announcement of decision and then passing legislation which you have on the agenda as well.
I'll add to that, there is, maybe Doug, Doug could elaborate if he wants to, but there is a, attached to the plan that you have, there's a pump, there's a, there's a short punch list of items that have yet to be completed, but, and there's, some of them have been completed, and others are going to be completed under this spring with the, with the city holding a bond to ensure completion.
Doug, do you have anything to add?
Not unless somebody has questions on what the punch list and items are, and how they're being addressed.
Doug, that's standard procedure to have a punch list like this this time of year?
Yes.
And give people a chance for the weather to break. So, that's nothing out of the ordinary?
That is correct. Not out of the ordinary, no.
Are there any other questions for Ben, or Doug, or Andy?
Can't ask me questions.
If not, is there a motion to accept the announcement of decision for Maple Trace PRD Phase 1 subdivision plot of record and dedication of subdivision public improvements?
Move?
Second. Who can second it? Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, legislation. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance accepting certain public improvements dedicated by FLG Chardon LLC for public use, authorizing the recording of a dedication plat and declaring an emergency.
Does our motion read this by title only for the second and third time?
Don't move.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Motion carries. Never read it, please.
Ordinance number 3263. An ordinance accepting certain public improvements dedicated by FLG Chardon LLC for public use, authorizing the recording of a dedication plat and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3263. An ordinance accepting certain public improvements dedicated by FLG Chardon LLC for public use, authorizing the recording of a dedication plat and declaring an emergency. authorizing the recording of a dedication plat and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3263?
Hello?
Second. Move and second it, discussion? Steve?
No, this is the final step. I believe they, they're looking at, they would hope to record the plat tomorrow, so I'll need to get some signatures tonight before everybody leaves, if, if you guys approve it. And then hopefully within a week or two, the model home will start going up. And, and from my understanding, from my meeting with Ryan Holmes on Monday, they will have the, the model home will be done within 60 days. And then they'll start selling lots. And they're, and they're, they're anticipating 25 to 30 lots this year.
Are there any questions for Steve? Any other discussions? Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lalko?
Yes.
Moving on to Legislation B, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none?
A resolution awarding the Center Street sanitary improvement project to the lowest and best bidder and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with DeJoye Suburban Escavating for performance of the project consistent with its bid submission and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So move.
Second.
Move and second it, discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lalko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Resolution number 2-24. A resolution awarding the Center Street sanitary improvement project to the lowest and best bidder and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with DeJoye Suburban Escavating for performance of the project consistent with its bid submission and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 2-24. A resolution awarding the Center Street sanitary improvement project to the lowest and best bidder and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with DeJoye Suburban Escavating for performance of the project consistent with its bid submission and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of Resolution number 2-24?
So moved?
Second.
Move and second it, discussion? Doug?
Thank you. As Randy mentioned in his report, we received eight bids for this project. The low bid was about 3% below the estimate at $541,577. Bids ranged as high as $793,880. So we had a pretty wide swing on that. DeJoye Suburban has completed successfully other projects in town, specifically the Meadowlands Drive extension, and they did the sanitary sewer extension over, that into town as well. Had no issues with them and very good contractor and very capable.
Doug, can you remind me what the starting point and the ending point is of this?
Of this one? Roughly from get-go up to second.
And then I'd see it's 137 days for theirs that was kind of stood out, that's a...
Yeah, I did check with the contractor on that. That 137 days on his, that he inserted on his bid form was based on the anticipated start and end dates we put in, in the contract documents, that they needed to start on or before March 1st and complete by mid-July, I think it was. So those are, those are how he calculated, is 137. But that number was kind of in conflict with his inspection hours number. So I inquired, and when I looked at, I inquired with him, and when I looked at his calculation sheet for his inspection hours, he plans to start around April 1st and finish by the mid-May. So it's not going to be 137 days to complete.
Big hardship during Maple Festival.
Right.
Because that's a busy, busy stretch, right?
Yeah. Yeah, well, and this work's going to be done at night.
Gotcha. So it, it'll be restored at turning of the day so that you can...
Yeah. They'll, they'll stretch out their work zone at night. And the reason we went at night was because of traffic and flows within the sewer. Flows are a lot less at night, so it's a lot less pumping. So they'll be able, after 7:00, they'll be able to stretch out their work zone. And by 6:00 AM, they have to have it pulled back down as small as possible.
Dave, did I answer your question on this longevity?
Yes, I had asked Doug. I called him today and asked him to look into that because, Dan, I have the exact same.
Yeah, yeah, same. Are there any other questions for Doug on this issue?
And I believe Maple Festival is real early this year, right?
Into April?
Oh, no, that's right. It goes to the last full weekend.
That's full weekend in April, there.
Easter's early this year. I was thinking the weekend after Easter, but that...
Changed it a few years.
They changed it, I, yeah, I remember.
It's April 14.
After the big snow.
Yes. The mind goes once in a while.
Christmas till the 25th, December.
Every year?
Okay, if there's no other questions, Amy, you can call the question.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lalko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Legislation C, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for, to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So move. Second.
Move and second it, discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yeah.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lalko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3264. An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2024 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3264. An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3264?
So move.
Second.
Second it, discussion? Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you an amended appropriations ordinance for your view and consideration. This increase of $35,000 to Fund 452 is due to the planning and zoning vehicle being struck by a tree and it was scrapped, so it needs to be replaced sooner than originally planned.
Question for you. Is the vehicle we're looking at, does it cost $35,000? Is that the, is that the top end of the range of vehicle?
I think it's about 31-ish.
And, and did we collect insurance?
We did.
What was that?
$8,800 for the vehicle, for the planning and zoning car and then the service car one. Just, just over $20,000 for both. Both cars were total.
What was the insurance of the property, Eric?
Correct.
Because sort of vehicle are you looking to buy?
State bid, Ford Escape.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lalko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the, Agenda Item Number 12, review of expenditures.
Well, Mr. Martin and I reviewed the expenditures. We did have some questions we sent to Finance and Brittany answered them. We only had about six questions, but everything was in order.
That was good.
Great. Thanks for that. Moving on to executive session. We do have reason for executive session for the following reasons. Consider the appointment or... Consider sale or other disposition of property. Consider a request for economic development assistance. And to, and for conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject pending court protection. Into executive session, I would like to invite Amy Day, Clerk of Counsel, Randy Sharp, City Manager Steve Yeney, Community Development Administrator, Ben Trinacki, Law Director. That is everyone. And is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Move and second it?[1777.12]